Four hundred units in two separate phases, one for two eighty and the other one for whatever the amount of, you know, to take up building wise. And I'm not quite understanding why now this is all being turned around. What's the purpose? I don't know what's ahead for us. I mean, I know what's ahead, I know what I see, but I don't understand why it's such a hard time for us.
I don't think that, I don't agree with your assumption unless I've missed the point completely. Are there really two phases? There was a four hundred number somewhere in the gateway district plan, Mr. Geisell?
It was two phases.
And if so, I would think that would be incorporated in the, because the gateway district says two eighty and we changed it to that from two seventy-five. So this is a forty-five percent growth from the original two seventy-five.
Correct. My understanding was that the developer had always contemplated the four hundred units, although zoning had only approved two seventy, I'm sorry, two seventy-five. Then there was a subsequent text amendment to allow five additional units for a total of two eighty. And then we're now being presented with another regulation change, asking for another hundred and twenty for a total of four hundred. My understanding of the phasing of the project was the developer had come in and said due to economic hardships and the climate in two thousand eight that they had to build the residential first and ultimately received that approval from the zoning commission. And that the second phase of this would be the commercial development. And that's, you know, not to say that we won't still see that. I mean, it's possible that the second phase is that they'll come in with their proposal for a commercial development.
All you're saying is that there are only two hundred and seventy-five units approved.
Two hundred and eighty right now, currently. Yes.
And if I might, that was my issue during that whole discussion. And the reason for the division was that they were to do work on the commercial before they got the extra units. But that was the reason for the division. And originally, you can call it the commercial was supposed to be done before there was any residential at all. So that's why it's an issue now, because now they want, they want to complete the residential before doing any work.
Are they the one, I'm sorry, the commercial part of it, meaning the big box stores?
Well, their whole plan, which was to have not only that, perhaps a larger store, but also the smaller store that would be associated with it.
Right. I understand that. So now, with, given the fact that that would be what they say, it was the fact that Costco using that was what they thought they were bringing in as how they sold this, where I didn't want to sign, Costco said, because it's not enough and I'm not quite there yet. And this back and forth of who's going to do what first. So now this other extra units from the two eighty to the four hundred now will complete that thought for them. And Costco then can come in because it is advantageous for them to make bigger roads, bigger areas, and all of that for now four hundred units.
That's their argument.
That's their argument.
And so the question is, do you waive the condition to have the commercial because in fact, the commercial isn't completed?
But at some point, they will still build the other units, residential.
I think that's an assumption. I think that perhaps we are confusing the formal phase one and phase twos that we throw around for construction processes, tell me if I'm wrong, Mr. Geisell, with hypothetical phase one, two intention, hope and prayer of the developer to eventually get to the four hundred, that that was consciously avoided by the planning and zoning commission of eight years ago, I believe, with the intent that you would have a lopsided residential burden to the town that would overwhelm the, the commercial value of the development. And that's further eroded by the fact that all of these junior tenants that we allude to may well become the responsibility and dream of some other developer because the current organization who was talking up their investment in infrastructure all along missed one of the most elemental infrastructure investment, which was to purchase the land that would provide the access that Costco needs. Here's the big elephant in the room. Costco's not coming. I don't care what they sign. You look at that map right now and the access we're offering is a ten-foot wide driveway that's two hundred feet long. Costco isn't coming in two thousand seventeen. I know that's the brag, but they're not coming. Does anybody see that happening down a ten-foot driveway? So I know that just redirected a lot of things and maybe people are thinking there, but my back of the envelope math here, two hundred and eighty units, is it unreasonable to say fifty kids, is that unreasonable, fifty schoolkids? I don't know. But fifty kids, if you assume twelve thousand dollars a head for the kids, goes to six hundred thousand dollar services bill to the town of East Line, which cancels out everything revenue-wise that came from the residential, cancels it out. Now we need to cover it with Costco, right? And or whatever else comes. Scale that fifty up to four hundred units. It was fifty out of two hundred and eighty. What's X when you have four hundred units? It turns into seventy-one point four kids. And your bill is now, I used seventy-one, eight hundred fifty-two thousand dollars. So now you really need the junior stores. I don't know the math, but those are rough reasonable numbers, I think, that should be easily understood by any casual observer.
So I guess the fifty students, and that's based on?
I divided six hundred thousand by twelve thousand. That's what I did.
Okay.
To see how many kids you can support with what Attorney Harris says is their contribution to the town in taxes due to residential.
Right. Okay.
And he said five hundred. I used six hundred, which is bigger.
Okay. Because I think in terms of school students, they were estimating twenty-five to thirty-five in that, that range.
Okay. Everything I estimated was a low ball, twelve thousand, everything.
And that was for a total of four hundred units?
Right.
If the math works to anybody, I'd love to hear them lay it out the way I did.
Yes, I think Frank, Frank has certainly, you know, a method there and we're arguing over, or we're disputing whether the yield would be a lot of students or little students. And we have a sheet here that's saying that so far with a hundred and forty leases, which is fifty percent, the net new children is only five. So we're, and this is without engaging Board of Ed or getting what I think would be, you know, what our town resources say. We're getting this information from an attorney, from a two thousand and seven impact analysis. I think Frank's point is reasonable that we're, we're looking long-term here. We don't, we're looking at what kind of families could be renting there in ten years, right? And so I think everybody's calculations are fuzzy enough that we should be entertaining a kind of worst-case scenario, best-case scenario. It appears we're in a best-case scenario right here, according to Ted Harris, that only five kids, I'm shocked that of the seventeen in the, of the seventeen students who live there now, twelve of them were already from East Line and moved around.
Correct.
Which, I didn't realize that, but they're calling this net as only five new kids, which following Frank's method would mean if they're fifty percent with five kids, at a hundred percent, they'll have ten new heads.
Correct.
And with the four hundred, a forty percent increase on that, we're looking at fourteen students. So Frank's number was up closer to fifty. It sounds like the development was, is on the record.
Right.
Projecting how many?
Twenty-five to thirty-five.
Twenty-five to thirty-five.
Now.
So that's a pretty big range.
With that said, and understanding that school enrollments are projected to go down.
There are a lot of dynamics, I do understand that.
Yeah. So, you know, again, I think what I, you know, what I take away from this and looking at the history of how the town has approached, at least the planning commission, in terms of whether or not the regulation itself and the modifications thereof that came subsequent to the initial adoption, we found that that was consistent. And the whole idea with this zone was that we wanted to bring commercial development to the town in this area. So that's the intent. That's the intent, I believe, of the P O C D, the intent of the regulation. So, you know, in my discussions with the developer, you know, he's saying, I need these additional four units to offset the infrastructure costs of connecting East Society Road to one sixty-one.
But is that new, is that new? Did that just happen? Or wasn't that always part of their plan? Wasn't that always?
It's always part of the plan.
A cost that they had to carry?
Yes. And he's not, it's always a cost that they had to carry. And I think it was always their intention to eventually ask for four hundred units.
It was.
Because otherwise financially, it would never have worked out. And I think the profit was probably substantial enough for them to take the risk to get to where they're at now. Now, in terms of discussions with the state of D O T and how this all kind of plays together is, the developer says, I need the four units to pay for the infrastructure to make the connection. And then with that, that'll be sufficient enough, well, as we speak, I guess Costco is pursuing an Army Corps permit. Once they locate and they get, well, maybe before they locate, but when they get approval, the D O T will go ahead and begin designing and getting, making approvals for the relocation of the off-ramps. In terms of Costco, when they build, what they're going to do is temporarily relocate the exit ramps. And they would have a temporary driveway. And obviously, you know, the ten-foot wide driveway would not be sufficient.
Do they own pools, et cetera? Does the developer own that property?
They don't own, they own the property right adjacent to it. So if you did follow down that drive aisle.
That's what forces the ten-foot driveway, that and the transformer cage.
Well, they, pools, et cetera, has an easement or right to pass over their property. So they'll be able to get, they should be able to get at least a twenty-five-foot wide driveway in and out.
Gary, I'm really concerned here. Have they pulled any permits yet, Costco, any, anything for the commercial?
Costco has not applied to the town. They have been in discussions with the town regarding site plan layout and architecturals.
The smaller stores, do they own that land yet?
The land adjacent to, the land owned by G D E L, if I say that right, G D E L, otherwise known as the Old Shack property and currently the driving range, is currently under separate ownership. And they're trying to pursue that as well. And regardless if, I think what, regardless of whether or not they own it, again, they may not be the developer bringing in that commercial. But the, the master plan that was approved as part of the Gateway Plan Development District is that, that's the plan that would go forward. So even if another developer came in and said, I'm going to build this out.
Right.
That they're going to have to follow this plan.
Okay. Is there still a cease and correct order?
The inland wetland agency currently still on the books has a cease and correct order for work done.
Okay. What I am seeing and what you presented tonight, the newest information is the ones that are dated is two thousand and twelve. There is nothing current, there is an undated actual demographics to date. And the agreement, when everybody voted on this originally, this is not what was voted on. It has changed. They were, the condos were going to be sold. Now they're rented. And now they're asking for more. And everybody needs to remember, that is our aquifer. And they haven't corrected, the inland wetlands still hold that. And how can, they haven't, to me, in my opinion, they have not done what they said they were going to do. It sounds good, you know, the information and all the papers, but actually, I think there are a lot more students living there. I don't know how this information was gathered. It doesn't make sense. They have not done and corrected a major problem up there. And they're coming forward, asking for more, and nothing is being done. Just them asking for more. There's no guarantee.
Well, I would indicate that they have done work to correct the cease and correct orders.
But there's, they have.
They haven't, they're not lifted as of yet, but that does not mean they're not working at it. They have remediated the area that was inundated with material as a result of the water main break, which was an unforeseen accident. The other issue was over on the northern crossing or otherwise what we refer to as the C L M P crossing, which crosses the Patagonia. There are three culverts in that. And over in this area, just west of the river, they brought in, I guess, fill material and almost to the, I'm not sure exactly how deep it was, but it seemed like it was approximately two feet increase in elevation, which they've subsequently had to go back in based on my direction and excavate out. And we've had our town engineer look at it as well. And the reason being is that this area is within the flood plain. So without a further study by FEMA and the Army Corps, you know, if you're increasing, you don't want to create a damming effect. So that material had to get scraped out, which they've done, and brought it back down to the original grade. We're waiting on the engineers to certify that they're back down to the original grade. And they did not increase the flood plain with any material. So there is work being done. And I know that you're seeing just a hundred and twenty units that they're asking for. And, you know, we have a hundred and forty that have been constructed and COed. They have roughly, according to Donna's email, which I just set aside, there were several buildings that have to get COed, but they're finishing up that work. And again, I would point to, you know, it is one of the largest developments that East Line has ever seen in terms of units. This is something that Mr. Shook and I was discussing earlier. And if you put it into context, a hundred and forty units is approximately equivalent to three single-family homes. And if you look at the rate of growth that the, you know, the town's experienced thus far and say the last five to six years, we've approved how many subdivisions, right? There's a handful. And so I think the trend is moving from the subdivision world over to apartments multifamily. And multifamily, if you look through the P O C D and historically, has always outpaced. And there made a few anomalies where you would have a subdivision land and that would be such as like the orchards. That was a hundred and sixty lots. And they're still in that one subdivision, you know, sixty to seventy lots that have to be built out. So I guess, you know, just trying to give the planning commission a context in which to frame this. And obviously, you know, it would be my suggestion that you recommend to the zoning commission that they consider limiting the number of bedrooms, specifically for the reason that's Frank stated in the cost of services to, you know, in terms of educating children. And, you know, maybe the conservative approach is to use the developer's study and say, look, you got twenty-five to thirty-five students, if the economic climate changes and some large employer comes to town. What if Pfizer, who has been somewhat non-existent, decides to come back? I don't know. I mean.
That's, that's all a dream.
Yeah. But, but that's not to say that something large is not possible in southeastern Connecticut.
Well, let me jump in right there.
I don't know what it takes to run certain facilities, but I know there are local communities adjacent to East Line where they've, are passing zoning regulations to allow for dispensaries. So I don't know what kind of employment that would bring, but they're, they're commercial, heavy commercial industrial uses, agricultural uses. That could turn into a booming business and require large employment. The Costco in and of itself, they're estimated to bring in about two hundred jobs.
Okay. What if they don't come?
If they don't come?
Then what are we?
The land would sit fallow until someone did come or we rezoned.
And so they haven't pulled any permits, nothing has been done commercially. You know, it's nice to say, oh yeah, we're going to do this, but it, what if it doesn't happen? This, I am very, very uncomfortable.
Well, if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen.
I'll answer that. What we'll have is an area that's zoned commercial or light industrial, it was, right?
It was light, it would remain gateway planned unless they go back.
Right. It'll still be buildable to do that, but we'll have a developer who's gone and reaped all the benefits of building four hundred units of residential. And maybe we'll have this twenty-five-foot driveway as an access, which isn't that much better, but.
Well, if they don't come, we won't even have that. You would just have East Society Road as it's been built.
So you think a twenty-five foot is going to get it done? Twenty-five foot why?
I'd have to throw a scale in there.
I mean, that's a two-car garage for Costco. I mean, that's what.
Okay. I have one other comment. Is it true?
I would suspect it's wider than that, but, I mean, they wouldn't be going through this exercise if it wasn't, but.
If it wasn't, I'm sorry, I just have to, I watched that tape we made and I know you even want to get in, I just have to share this thought. I watched the tape that we did from September seventeen. And all the energy that I heard from the developer was being expended toward residential. There was some casual commentary about any day now Costco's going to be in here with their proposal for their pad and someday somebody will do those other things on the property that we don't own, which is bragging about all the time for these junior tenants. All of the energy is toward residential. And I just, I hate to say it, but I have to. I don't see a good faith effort and I think that we are sticking our heads in the sand. If we don't, the planning commission look longer term and say, the dots don't connect to get where this plan was originally written. You've said it, that road is required, the road that they're trying to barter as if something to trade or to leverage the town now, that's required. I mean, it's right in here. When you develop more than twenty acres, it's done. The developer has to finish the road. Perhaps all of the infrastructure expenditures that are going into residential now and not finishing the road that's required or buying the land that was promised to put these other stores on, so that you had a plan that was viable with an access that worked.
Right.
None of those things were done. The dots don't connect for this being a viable thing. I think it's turning into a cut and run. And I think that zoning enforcement from our town should be all over, where's my road? Where's my road? Where's my road? What's your plan?
Right. I have a question. Is it true they're already advertising three bedroom for their new, what they, and it's been approved?
I think that, yeah, I think that was what.
Now, I'm offended by that.
It's, yes, it's already, it's, yeah, it's there.
This is what they're selling, three.
Yeah, it's, it's there.
Okay. So they're selling three, we're meeting tonight. There's a problem here. And I think this ought to be presented to our town attorney.
They're already advertising four hundred plus, aren't they?
Are they really?
Yeah.
I think we need to present that to our town attorney. Why are we meeting if it's according to them, it's already been done? Done deal.
Can we just circle back to that? Fran and Ann both mentioned something just a moment ago. Is, are they publishing those four hundred units?
Whoa, there's something here on KGI properties that we have that says, work on the gentleman's portfolio retail, four hundred residential units.
It's there.
I think that's what's coming.
It's there. It is.
All right. Well, I think this is when that was their goal and they got scaled back on it.
Yeah.
Right.
But it's there, it's there in the brochure, when you go there, it's there.
Well, let's, let's start to, let's start to focus this on, on how this might look in a, in a motion. I just want to throw out a quick, a quick note. Okay, go ahead, Rita.
I just want to add one other thing.
Yeah, of course.
The ten-foot wide driveway that you see on the, parallel to the golf course and to pools, et cetera, that really is going to be at some point a designated road only for emergency use. That was what was said.
Where was that said?
It's.
Can you put Google Earth up there? So we can get our head around this.
It's, when you go there and you, and you talk to some of the people that are there, that's what it is. We had gone down there at one point, you remember? I mean, we couldn't even figure out how any of this was going, you were going, you couldn't even get out, never mind get in, because we had a hard time getting out.
Yeah.
It's because at best, it was dangerous. And you needed two, four pairs of eyes to look at where you were going to make a turn. But it was said that that was only going to be a road for emergency services.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Go ahead.
When they went from two hundred and seventy-five to two hundred and eighty, was there pushback at that time? And if so, what was it from just, for just adding five more?
It's a great question because it's a, it's a good, the quantity issue is important. When we went from two seventy-five to two eighty, nobody could really say this made a huge impact on the town. This is a forty-two percent increase or something percent.
But they said at that point, because it wouldn't be conducive enough for them to not, there was so much extra wasted space in there, if you can remember when they came here and they said that, that's why they're using, that's why they're applying for the five additional units.
Right.
Yeah, that one was easy, I think.
That was a, yeah.
Yeah. So that was where that went.
Okay. So, Mr. Geisell, did you want to orient us?
Well, I only asked for, because, just because Rita's discussion about the, there's the power transformers, there's cash true value, there's the driving range. This is how, you got to give me pools, et cetera, here, right? Yes, there's pools, et cetera, you see the pool. And I guess, I didn't realize this wasn't pools, et cetera, is landed. They have just a right of way over to get in. The thing's split in half, imagine a car. It's no kidding, ten, ten feet is going to pools, et cetera, and ten feet wide is going on. But yeah, their emergency access is on that path, but if the road is put in the original plan set, and from here, you're going to join that trajectory over here behind the store and head along what, a road that existed for years. I've run in this, I know these hills pretty well. Ancient highway goes all the way through the East Society. And you can make a right, or you always could, make a right and go to Society Road, make a left and pop out behind pools, et cetera. That road is there. And that road right now is better than what they have as an emergency access if you had the drive. There's one bridge, it's one lane, but it'll be a better drive, except there's an enormous pile of dirt right between Building Seven and Twelve that kind of hide the fact that there's really a road there.
So, I'm going to go back, you see in the aerial, I'm going to go back to this base map. This, this is the developer right here and the green is the emergency access drive as it stands today. So you come in off of this, you have to travel up here, down, behind pools, et cetera, buy these two, two, well, they're going to, they've knocked down one of these homes, but buy this one home, which will be knocked down up here. This portion of road is yet to be paved, it will be paved cul-de-sac and then you'll have the emergency drive goosenecks into it. And so off of here, obviously, are the existing buildings.
I want to just come back to a note that I sketched a second ago when Frank was talking. Again, in the spirit of filing a report that we could all get behind, I wrote this down. And it may be vague, but I think this might use just the kind of plain speech that we is appropriate. Intensification of residential use in the gateway is inconsistent with the P O C D, which envisioned a mixed-use zone. To me, that zooms it out to kind of where we are. And I think people are saying, were there to be a commitment from Costco if we, that would satisfy the mixed-use character of the zone? We are looking at years of documents proposing commercial. We are deliberating on another residential use. So I thought the word intensification reflects that, that they are going from the two eighty to the four hundred. And this text amendment would not bring the gateway closer to being a mixed-use zone. amendment would not bring the gateway closer to being a mixed-use zone. It takes it further towards being a residential zone.
What about the use of the phrase light industrial, which is in your P O C D, that is really residential as God? Total residential is not the intent of light industrial.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that's, yeah, a good point. It, it became the gateway, uh, prior to the gateway, it was a light industrial. Um, so maybe I would just say intensification of the residential use in the, maybe we can even insert it there. In the former light industrial, now the gateway, is inconsistent with what the plan of conservation was looking to achieve. We were looking to build something that would attract commercial. Six years into a recession, we're looking at intensified residential as the way forward. Until we see an application here that says there's junior box stores coming in, or a big box store, um, I think we should, um, uh, focus our, our motion around what's in front of us, what we know.
Right.
Uh, rather than speculating, cause it can be a, um, that can muddy the water too much, I think. We know that they have plans, but right now, the question is two eighty to four hundred, is it consistent or inconsistent?
And, uh, just to, to put one thing out of the P O C D, which, which that's a good one, but they open it, the mission statement, chapter one, one point one, safety, security, economic stability is what I'm, I'm seeing here. And all the other things, beauty, maintenance of property values, maintenance of property values, perhaps the school district starts, uh, well, I don't know. Maintenance of property values and infrastructure, all are important to the long-term physical development of East Line. And I think, uh, the unbalanced nature that this creates of this mixed-use development, uh, fails to meet the basic mission statement of chapter one.
Uh, Mr. Geisell, could you pull up the, um, P O C D?
Sure.
And could we find the, um, uh, cause I'd like, again, to, to try to be, you know, emphasize the continuity in the planning permission here, and look at, um, what, when, I believe, the plan of conservation wrote about this parcel, the light industrial and the gateway, they were, um, uh, they described that this new gateway development district would take advantage of the growth in casinos and the biomedical field. Um, I, I think it's worth just, uh, circling back to that, because as Roseanne pointed out, that was the guiding light of this, to transition a, uh, ineffective light industrial into something that worked with the economic climate we were in. That economic climate, and Gary should be able to find it in a minute, I believe was characterized by casino growth and a lot of things that, and this is current as of now, not only are our casinos not growing, our casinos are actively downsizing and trying to build a casino north of Hartford. So, I think it forces the planning commission to confront that reality. And I think, as Frank described, um...